Ball call please.
Baker?
Yep.
Bassett?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Bridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
There.
You have the minutes from the regular February 4th council meeting minutes in your packet. Are there any additions or corrections?
I move we approve the minutes as written.
Ball call please.
Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bar?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bridgeway?
You have the approved bills list in your packet. Are there any questions?
On the backside of the first page, configuration and calibration services LLC 777.2. What's that for Kent?
Those are some meters down at the sewer plant. Not the flow meter.
Not the flow meter?
Some of...
No.
The plant meters.
Okay.
I think of the names right off. They get calibrated once a year.
Okay. I just thought we were paying to calibrate meters that I didn't want us to have to start with. Okay. That is the only question I had there. Thank you.
I just have one second page. Page one down to 19985. H&amp;W Automotive has annual fee.
I asked her, uh, meeting.
To have a credit there, pay $39 a year.
Okay. For what?
To have a credit account there.
Are you kidding me? Is that something new? I never did. Good bylaw stuffer.
Are you sure it's not for like, do we have settling tanks?
Yeah. Do you have tucks and settling?
Yeah, that usually comes when you swap the tanks though.
It says...
That's more than $39.
It says right on the statement, annual fee.
Cause I just got one personally said annual fee and we called about it. It was for the settling tank we used to use.
Might be worth calling to make sure.
I have a quick question. First page, about $5 down. Infinity Source, it was a conference fee I believe?
No, no, it's below that. Check below to the left.
Bottom left of Infinity Source. That's the purpose of it.
Got it.
Any other questions?
If nobody has anything else, I move we pay the bills.
I'll second it. Ball call? Bar?
I'm staying.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bridgeway?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Baker?
I would like to invite Pastor Steve Irish to the podium to speak to council tonight.
I'd just like to touch on our, oh, I guess our processing plant. Is that what we're calling it? Processing plant that's requested to have medical marijuana or possibly see how we feel about it. And I wanted to start off with just to make sure that you guys know that I support you. I support the village of Hicksville. I hope that we grow and we prosper and the village is a better place to live. That's my goal to support you guys. I've spent last two weeks trying to educate myself about medical marijuana. And I guess the only thing that I could tell you, that I can give you a stack of documentations that says medical marijuana does a tremendous job for all kinds of different things. And I can stack up another same size stack of documentation that says it doesn't do what all the claims that it says. So I guess my only conclusion that I came to as I looked and I read is that the jury's still out. That medical marijuana, that there's still not some real solid documentation and some testing on whether medical marijuana does the things that it claims that it does. Matter of fact, the only thing I did find out is that the FDA, medical marijuana is not on the approved list of drugs for the federal department, federal drug administration, the FDA. That's about the only thing I did find out that's true. But I think, I think we need to take the long-term approach or at least a long-term look at this issue. I think we need to look down the road as far as we can. I think we need to educate ourselves and do our due diligence with this issue because I truly believe if we open the door, it's going to be very, very difficult to close. I think maybe we should talk to other cities and see how they're handling it. We should talk to maybe our representatives down in Columbus and see what they suggest that we do and how we handle this situation, this issue. Now, I got a chance to talk with Sean O'Donnell, the city law director there in defiance in our own Troy Exits, and they really confirmed what I really thought that, well, I'm just going to say it, that I really think that medical marijuana is a prerequisite for recreational marijuana. As we look across the states of, of the ones that have recreational marijuana, medical marijuana preceded them all. And, and again, I think we need to take sure, we make sure we're looking down the road and having a long-term view of this issue and make sure we have all the information that we possibly can have. You might say it's going to be more jobs. Well, I think the city has decided that, in the past, that an adult bookstore is not the jobs that we wanted here in Hicksville. I think the city in the past has decided that spice was not a place that we needed jobs for in the city of Hicksville. So jobs and, and income is not, is not always the right answer we want to see. So I guess, again, I strongly urge our council to take some real time to take a look, contact our state representatives. And Troy can correct me if I'm wrong, but I really do believe that we can make legislation here in the city of Hicksville to not have medical marijuana or looking down the road, recreational marijuana coming in. You might say it's coming, well, you can almost say it's here, but that doesn't mean we don't have to, we can stand our ground and not allow it here in the village of Hicksville. I thank you for your time. Again, I support the city council here in the village of Hicksville because we're going to move forward with our villages. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I touch on that just a little bit, Mary?
Yes.
Has anybody talked to that company that sent us the letter? What'd you come up with?
I emailed them and she responded the very next day saying, if you go to botanica.us or US and you can go to their website and look at all the products they have, which are different types of flavored gums and gummies and candies and, let me see if I pulled the email, to ask her for references of other villages and towns. Told her we had a meeting last night. We had a topic of having medical marijuana business in our town. One of the council's thoughts and legal questions for our solicitor, are you able to provide me with some references of villages and towns that you currently have up and running, other facilities and businesses that are up and running? Like the emails you had with Arizona inspector that says some red flags and I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, but I'm, I'm glad your business, you described it, cultivate or grow marijuana and/or retail sell medical drugs at that facility. Just doing some research before I put one way or the other. And she responded by saying, right now we have a dispensary and cultivation facility in Tucson, Arizona. We have been in operation since August 2013. You can find us on Google and various other platforms under the name Botanica. Feel free to contact the Arizona Department of Health to inquire about our biannual inspection records as well. Please let me know if you need anything else.
I also emailed back and forth with her quite a little bit, but I only copied the rest of it on my phone, which I did not bring in here because we're not supposed to have In all my conversations, I've talked directly with Erin Pollinger and she said, at this time, we're not actively looking for a location. We are researching which counties, townships allow medical marijuana production sites and then they'll move on from there. I also spoke with the directors over in Paulding County, because I happen to be over there at the restaurant eating when they walked in. And years ago, Judge Burkhart, he passed, while he sat on the bench, he passed a thing that all counties, or excuse me, all townships in Paulding County cannot do any of this. That's, it's already been done. And, and, and they were also, you know, this company checked with Paulding and Paulding County and I think they're checking with everybody. They're just trying to find somebody that's going to let them in. And in all my conversations with everybody that I spoke with, I think, and the reverend said, you know, we need to take a good, long, hard look at this down the road. I think if you're going to do something, you better do it soon. If you're going to pass legislation that says this is not going to happen in Hicksville and/or Hicksville Township, you better do it soon because the wheel is turning faster than what we're moving. And that's all I got.
Isn't marijuana still a federal, illegal federal, correct?
Yep.
So, so what jurisdiction do we have to counter a federal law?
No, no, I'm not saying we agree with it, but we disagree. We don't allow it.
No, I was just saying, because if we do allow it, under what jurisdiction would, are we...
Well, it's not that we allow it. It's already allowed. The state's done that.
Okay.
The state of Ohio's done that, but they've allowed each village, city, township, municipality to basically on their own decide if you don't want it in your jurisdiction, you can pass legislation and it's typically, or where it comes is it's in the form of like zoning, basically that say, none of the following institutions are permitted, you know, within the village limits and you cover all the, you can cover as many or all of what you want, but they're basically three operations. There's what you would call the growing operation. And then the operation like this is where they take the raw marijuana and make it into other products. And then you got the people that get it to the end user, the dispensaries. And I think that runs, or maybe what Eric said, that they operate a dispensary in Arizona. I think that's, and I'm just speaking generally, what's always been one of the concerns for the people that are passing legislation to avoid it is, I'll say this, maybe my own opinion, but it's not because I've talked to a lot of people involved in this. The medical marijuana thing in Ohio is a front basically to get towards recreational marijuana. Nobody can deny that. You talk to your representative, your senator, your state people, they will tell you what happened was they were pushing to get a constitutional amendment to permit recreational marijuana in Ohio, the lobby, whoever it is. And in order to head that off for a little bit longer, the legislators scrambled to get something put together that would appease some people to get them to back off basically. But I think everybody would say that that was, the whole intent was, like Reverend Irish said, once you get in the medical and then you start working on the recreational and that's the way Colorado, Michigan, all those places are, are heading. So, I mean, there's, I mean, that's not really pretend. And the fact that they're already dispensary, the people that are in the know, what they'd say is, yeah, they may have a, a facility out here that's not that, but then the second something passes it's recreational, there's going to be a storefront in that town because they already got the stuff here. You know, why wouldn't they be dumb not to open it there? But the law is already in place that permits it. Now, if they were to go, if either the legislature or the voters were to approve recreational, then whatever we do on the medical front, unless they put a similar provision in the new law, basically would be a non-issue at that point down the road. So to answer one of the pastor's questions, we can't do anything about the recreational marijuana because it's not allowed right now anyway. But from the medical side, we can pass legislation unequivocally 100% to say that's not, you know, the dispensary, the grow operation, the manufacturing facility is not permitted in here. And like I said, a lot of, a lot of states still don't allow it. Some states do. Still illegal under federal law. Marijuana is what they call a scheduled drug under the, you know, the food and drug administration. So that's always the catch 22. And we talked the last time about a lot of the incidental things that raises like the banking issue. They got nowhere to put their money. Matter of fact, I was told by a friend that's in the banking business that they've all had meetings at the banks and stuff about what happens if it does get recreational in Ohio because they got basically several tiers of people that they won't do business with. First of all, the companies themselves because of the federal law issue, but then you get down underneath it, the people that maybe supply them other materials and stuff like that, they may have to stop doing business with them ultimately, all the way down to people like their accountants and their lawyers, that they, that they'll be on the list of people because they're affiliated with them, that they can't do business. So it does create a messy scenario from a banking standpoint. But I think, again, I was involved in the stuff that they did in defiance and my concern has always been, and I said this 100 times, everybody that even recreationally uses marijuana doesn't turn into like a heroin addict. I don't think anybody's going to say that. There are people that use it, just like a lot of people drink beer, drink wine or whatever. But if you look at the studies and you talk to the people that, the two classes of people, the people that do have serious drug problems, you'd be hard pressed to find somebody that's a heroin or a methamphetamine addict that didn't start by smoking marijuana. Now, some of them maybe had prescription drug issues because they had an injury, but by and large, most of them started, that's why it's known as a gateway drug. And so your concern is that, you know, some of this will increase some of that. The other thing, and I think I sent the email to Diane, but I don't know if anybody else saw it, there was an article that was actually forwarded to me that was about, one of the better ones that I've read by somebody that's qualified, that's done the research, and there is a link to even long-term marijuana use medically or not, a link to increase in mental illness and violent behavior. And so that's always a concern, you know, making that easier, what's it, what's it going to be down the road? And I think in actually a more interesting part of that that I found is, and I did a little more research on it my own, they're basically suggesting that part of the reason that cannabis lobby has been so successful is they've been the one that's been pushing the opiate to the media and stuff like that about how, not that it's not bad, and we'd all say it's bad, but they've been trying to get that out in front while they ride behind getting everything passed in the bag. It's actually pretty smart if you're looking at it from a lobbyist standpoint. It's kind of the old bait and switch or, you know, deflect and whatever, but they've been the one pushing that issue. And so that concerns me a little bit in that some of the studies they're citing and like the pastor said, you can find, you know, we could have a stack this high. This one says all the benefits. This one says by reputable people that have a lot more schooling than any of us in here and they, they say the exact opposite. Oh, that's not proven by whatever they studied. So that's, that's my concern from the law enforcement angle, and I know the chief spoke to that the last time. You know, I obviously prosecute a lot of people for a lot of different things and, you know, possession of marijuana is way down the level, but a lot of the other stuff that I deal with, the violent stuff, even stuff as frequent as like driving under suspension and things like that, a lot of that is generated either by drug usage or quite frankly, mental illness. And so it's, how do you try and slow down some of that trend or whatever? But it's, you know, it's, it's out there and, and, you know, probably in the not-too-distant future, probably going to be faced again with the recreational aspect of it. But again, that doesn't mean that we as a community... The other thing I can say over in defiance that they were concerned about, at least some of the council people and others expressed some concern about is, yeah, 20 jobs or whatever would be great, but if we do that for 20 jobs, you run the risk of some other, and I mean, it's the bird in the hand, you know, deal, but you run the risk of somebody saying, well, we don't want to go into a place where there's, you know, they've permitted marijuana type facilities because even though they're not selling or doing whatever, we don't want employees that are potentially under the influence. That's the other angle on it all is still illegal in federal law. Most companies will still, that do drug testing, they'll still say in their policies, even if you got a prescription, if we test you and you test positive, you're gone. And I know my, my wife's employer is headquartered in Colorado and when they go to their corporate things and they have meetings, that's one of the first ones like, hey, we don't care if it's legal in Colorado. If you get tested and they do random testing, they do whatever, the first time, you're gone. I don't care if you got a prescription or not. So, and it's recreationally allowed there now. So it does create a lot of more concern or at least things to think about from the community. And I guess from a procedural standpoint, what I would say is if somebody is interested in bringing it to a vote, for lack of a better term, all somebody would have to do is direct me to bring the legislation for, lack of a better term, for the ban. And then we, you know, would have three more readings and...
I think we need to do that.
Input and then everybody can study it and everybody can vote where they want to vote.
I, I know people, I mean, I grew up in the 60s and 70s. I, I know people that smoked marijuana. I don't get too excited about it. It doesn't bother me. But when I think, I want my grandson smoking it. And, and so if all we have to do is sit here tonight and prepare you to prepare us, an ordinance that says that we're not going to allow it in this village, that's fine. And I think we should do that. If 10 years down the road, Newville allowed going in and now Newville's got a turnpike going through it, six colleges and 11,000 people live there, maybe we'll take another look at it. But at this point in time, I would like to have you bring back legislation that says we're not going to do it.
Okay.
I just want to read one thing because on what Troy is talking about on the mental illness, I believe it was Alex Brenson that wrote the article, was a graduate of Young University.
Would you go to the podium please, Chief? Thank you.
He reports that cannabis users today are also consuming a drug that is far more potent than they ever had before. It's measurable.
Thank you.
THC level. All right. Back in the 70s, the THC level was about two and a half percent. Was less than 2% THC and back then. Now today, because of the farming, the sophisticated farming and the cloning techniques, it's about 20 to 25% higher on the THC level. So, so they use this, you know, use, they prefer extracts and they're nearly pure THC and that's part of the issue. I mean, you know, because your THC levels are much higher than they were back in the 60s and the 70s. All right? And like I said, all the articles they'll read, it's a, it's a way to try to promote and bring on recreational use. And most of the articles I've read, they've all read the same thing. It's a prerequisite that they're trying to get to recreational use. So, and this talks a lot, I think I forwarded this to you folks on the mental illness. So when it comes to the paranoia, how much it causes paranoia. So, and then when you, you know, in dealing with drug arrests and when you actually talk to some of these offenders, if they're quite honest with you, they will tell you that their drug usage increased or they started out with marijuana and using marijuana excessively and that increased them to start trying other drugs. Okay? So, so if you actually sit down and talk with someone that's been in the drug culture or has been arrested several times, you know, they will tell you that they started out on marijuana and it just kept increasing. So, and again, as long as it's federally prohibited, I think it's a wise move that we do make a rule that's not allowed here. I realize it's going to bring jobs, but I'm also worried about the clientele that will also bring to the village that's going to live here.
Thank you.
Do you need to vote for motion?
Well, we have a request. Well, no, Troy has word to go ahead and prepare it, so we'll have him bring it back.
You need to vote?
Nope. We'll have him bring it back to the next meeting.
I think we need to vote to see who doesn't agree with me.
You asked me to bring it back. That's the process. Then we vote.
Then you'll do the three readings and people can do their research and then they can...
Better to vote before you spend all that time writing it up. Let's move on.
Hey, we're going on to boards and commissions. There were no minutes in the packets. And then going on to council committee reports, there were no minutes in the packet. Are there any committees of council that want to report anything for your committees?
Water... Oh, sorry. You said something about tanker truck?
Yeah, we had to bring it in.
Water Sewers have a meeting this Wednesday at 3 o'clock, looking at, we're with an engineer and a couple of property owners about a well site for another well in the community and we're updating our committee and everybody with projects we have going on in the community and moving them forward.
Thank you. Administrator's report?
I had two things. I can't remember one of them. I didn't write it down.
Marijuana is...
No, that's not my problem. Yeah, that's the one I wrote down. On the limbs, people don't need to call. We know they're going to be having limbs out. We're probably going to be out for several weeks getting them. People are just going to have to have some patience. We do have some other things that have popped up that need done as well. So just get stuff out to the edge of the road. But we are asking just for storm damage stuff, bushes and some other things that people are hoping that we'll just get rid of since we're being nice guys. I don't think that's storm damage. Or if you go out and prune the tree, that's not storm damage. So, you know, stuff that's pretty obvious, yeah, get out to the edge of the road, we'll get it. It's going to take a little bit of time. And I do have a message in to the local tree trimmer to see when they could spend a couple of days getting things we can't reach, some things off some wires, stuff like that. That's primarily going to be easement trees. They're not going to be doing private property trees. So it'll take time, but we'll get, get to it. Oh, I guess the other thing is that ODOT study that was in your packet, I'm sure you won't do anything, so.
Don't you want to do anything? Don't you want to do anything?
The other thing I'd like to see is... I'm not picking on police department. These people that make their own two lanes there on North Main when you come up past Farmers Merchants and they want to turn right and somebody else wants to go straight, they just create a lane. And the same thing out here when you're on West High.
At all the intersections of them.
I know. They just make their own traffic lanes.
Been that way since I was a child.
They do it at McDonald's.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying. So that's got nothing to do with parking or anything. And that parking thing will show you people don't know how to drive. 99% of the accidents on clear weather and dry conditions.
My thought to the ODOT letters, if they want to do something in Hicksville, why don't they do something to the North Main Street Bridge? And that was my reply to Kansas.
That's a railroad.
Well, yeah, but that's on, that's number 17 on Department of Transportation's problem area. So why don't we just reply to them and say, look, we don't have room for anything there. Why don't you look at the North Main Street?
Well, they're not ordering us to do anything, but this is the second time in five years they've given you this thing. I think they're just strongly hinting that you do something.
I don't care. Measargon in Dane Street needs to be a different intersection.
That's why I'd like to fix the North Main biaduct and get rid of that truck detour, but I don't think it'll happen.
But you wouldn't have to deal with the railroad to get those, to have them fix it like they did this one?
Yeah. Even if ODOT was in favor of doing it, you still got to deal with CSX.
Right.
But first step would be getting ODOT on board and it just never responded until whatever's ever sent them in the past. The lawyers, they send them in the past. It'd help them out, it'd help CSX out, but-
Maybe, maybe Diane has a wonderful finger to email them back or call them, say, "Hey, boys, let's forget about this plan and let's, let's do something about that viaduct."
I remember when I, when I met with ODOT about issues in front of the school and they, they talked about, they didn't have so many accidents on that one compared to the viaduct, but it still wasn't a high priority on their list because a lot of places in Ohio, they have a lot more accidents than what we have here on the train tracks.
Probably injury accidents slash fatalities as opposed to property damage.
Anything else, Ken? All right. Do we have, Troy, do you have anything to report? Nothing on the agenda for you?
No.
All right. We'll have you bring that legislation back to the next meeting then.
Right.
Police chief, do you have a report you'd like to give?
No, I'm good.
All right. Thank you. Fire chief?
Me the bad guy and take your time. I don't have a lot. Like Larry mentioned, I've sent him a quick text that we had to put tires on the tanker. The ones that were on there were the original. We'll replace four, the four drive tires at this time. Chunks of rubber were coming out of them, so they were 22 years old to begin with, so. NFPA standard is 10-year tires. We just go till we can't go. I'd rather change them now. They got plenty of tread on, look like they're new, but the rubber just breaks down and they, they come apart. This Saturday, we're having a JAWS training event. If anybody'd like to come, we're going to bring the battery-operated tool in and try that out. It'll be at 9:30 at the station and we have our first round of tickets left for Saturday. March 9th, we have a breakfast. I'll bring that up again next meeting. I have purchased LED lights to go on the outside. I haven't got them on yet and you'll probably see some bills, some smaller bills coming through. The ladies auxiliary bought an ice machine for us. We're doing plumbing electrical on that. We've got some electrical that we have to do for a new washing machine we got on grant. And we're trying to do all that work ourselves to save money. As far as EMS, I know John has applied for the state grant, give about $7,000, $8,000 that can use for training or equipment. We usually get that every year, so hopefully we do the same this year.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I just got one thing to report.
You passed.
So, these are the new portables that we just got, our March radio system. We just put them in service today. I think they started using a couple of them over the weekend, the wireless, mic and the The police department are getting four mobile radios for the cars and then they will have, each have four repeaters in the car for us to be able to operate off of. So because of where we're located and how far away we are from a repeater or a tower, we're getting them first before anyone else. I think the sheriff's office is getting, as they build their new cars, they'll be putting the mobiles in those, in their new cars. So, that's all I had.
Thank you.
Since you brought that up, ours are over.
Val sent me a message today, said she didn't have anything for council tonight, but they're in the process of hiring and rehiring lifeguards for the pool for the summer. So we will go on to the fiscal officer's report.
You have your fund status and cash summary report. Cash summary is when it's folded because it's legal size. You have a new contact list and if it doesn't have the date of 2/15 at the bottom, then it's not good because I have extra fund numbers on it.
Did you say a contact list? Is it in this packet?
I haven't. I think yours is in your mailbox.
Oh, all right.
You have January mayor's court report and the police, police department report for their collection.
Did anybody have any questions about the purchase order list? Thank you, Cheryl. I think you requested it because you wanted to see purchase orders written, so I wondered if anybody had any questions about any of them written. Well, I do not have anything under my report. We have a gentleman at the back. He's still, would you want to, do you want to address council without anything?
No, just here to listen. Thank you.
Okay, all righty. Well, I guess there is one thing I added to my packet that I saw in my email today and it's like, this happened last year too. The residents got a random letter from a place called American Resources of Ohio and it was addressed right to the resident with their name and address, in this case, the one I had in front of me. And it says, "A response is requested by 3/3119." It is, it's a repair responsibility advisory and I remember discussing this last year that it was sent out. People might think that it's from the village of Hicksville, but it's not. They want you to buy into a water line protection program. That is not from the, that is not from the village of Hicksville, so you not need to apply.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Real quick, I got one more. I'm sorry.
Nice try, Eric.
An artesian pioneer company is looking at providing water to their east. EPA sent out a public notice, it's in many, many newspapers, Crescent, Volcom County Expositor, The Courier, Northwest Signal, The Legal Blade, Public Progress, Brian Hines, the Senate. Came out on the 12th, I believe, February 12th in their papers, but they're, EPA's having a public meeting in regards to this application on March 12th. It's at the Fayette Local Schools in Fayette, Ohio. It starts at 6 o'clock, so people that are interested in that situation, what they're planning on wanting to do with that facility at that site.
I'm making a motion to adjourn. I'll second that.
Go call. Baker? Yes, Martha?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Rich Mike?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Volunteer.